All right, I'm going to call to order this work session of the Board of Commissioners. And first we have Mr. Schilling. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. We have before you a service contract today. As you know, Margie Rice has left county employment and her primary client was the County Council. And several council members expressed an interest in hiring Margie to help in the transition to to train a new attorney to handle council matters. And so a service contract was put together using the county standard service contract form. Determine this agreement with Margie would be from January 29th of this year until the not to exceed fund amount of $20,000 is met. And the rate that would be paid would be $225 an hour so that that would authorize at least about 90 hours of work. And this was presented to the County Council last night. They approved it and established the amount that they were willing to appropriate for that. And it's before you, as all service contracts must be.
And since time is of the essence here, this is something we can vote on today and then ratify at a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that you need to ratify it at a subsequent meeting. I think you can conduct this kind of business today.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Yes, does this mean that Rice will be filling in and working with council until her replacement is made in addition to mentoring the new person? Or is it just to work with the newly appointed person?
Well, I think it's to work with the legal department to help bring whoever, whomever is representing the council, whatever attorney is filling in that position, up to speed on ongoing projects to provide background information about work that has been done. And so that's basically it. It is not, in my understanding, it's not an attorney hired by the council to represent the council. It's an attorney hired to assist the legal department in providing representation to the council.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. Rice for being willing to do this. I think dealing with the council is a pretty big job, not because of them, but because it just by its nature is a big job. And I'm sure she'll be very helpful.
Yeah, definitely. The council did hear this last night and there was resounding support for doing this and it makes a lot of sense. It looks like we have Councilmember Hawk.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. I think maybe Commissioner Githens touched on what I was going to ask, or probably should have asked it last evening. I didn't even think about it until this morning, but we were, because a couple of us then decided we would like to see it to be more than what was originally presented at 10,000, not to extend, exceed 10,000. Then we thought, well, that's only 44 hours. And so we really needed more hours than that because we don't know how long it will be before we have a replacement for the council. But now it appears from the conversation I'm just now hearing in this meeting that this is not just going to be that many hours to be spent on council issues, but on other issues related to the county. Do I understand that correctly?
That is not my understanding, Marty. It, the contract is for Margie Rice to assist, you know, the attorney that is filling in or hired to replace Margie and for 90 hours to assist them on matters relating to council issues.
Okay, great. Thank you. Because I was thinking if it was going to also be as Ms. Rice had had done was working with Health Department and others, that those hours could be gone pretty quickly. And I think the council will need that assistance as well, so.
Yes, that was my understanding that it will be used exclusively for council issues.
And then could I also ask, will we be seeing? I mean, I don't know whether there's going to be a gatekeeper for this or how, you know, there's seven council members. If we should all start calling with the same question, then of course, you know, the clock starts ticking. You know, I've worked for an attorney before and I know how they have to charge. The clock has to start clicking when the phone rings. So I don't know how that's going to be worked out, but perhaps that would be up to council leadership to declare how it should work out. But thank you so much for working through this because she will be greatly missed and a transition period will be very helpful. So will this go like in a transition line? In the legal department, where will this appropriation go?
It says it's from council right now. From the council budget right now is where it's coming from.
This is Kim. Hi. To answer Counselor Hawke's questions, it will be coming out of the contractual in the council office.
Okay, well, is Ms. Rice not now paid out of the legal department?
No, she's no longer with him.
Was she before? I'm just trying to figure out where this contract should go, but regardless, I'm sure you'll all work it out. Normally, if it's to be an employee in the legal department, and one would think we would work it, same as we had told everybody else, we'd put it in a transitional line, but however it works. I don't mean to slow it down. Let's just get it moving.
And then also to answer your question, my understanding is that if council members have questions for Ms. Rice with regards to council business, it comes to me and then I funnel all of those through to Margie.
And that might, that might be difficult too, because sometimes we have things pop up at last minute. So, but anyway, best of luck. Sunshine, the snow is going to melt off and it's going to be spring.
All right. Thank you so much. Great. So we need a motion on this item, please.
I move to accept the agreement for professional services between Dobbs Legal Group LLC and the Monroe County Board of Commissioners.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the agreement for professional services contract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, next we have Ms. Sensen Stein from Employee Services and Michelle Whitney Wash. New name from the Garden Group. Congratulations. To tell us, give us this end of project report from the Garden Group. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning. I think you said everything I was going to say. Michelle is here to present that information to you all and I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you Julie for recognizing the new name. So I would like to share screens so that we can see the report. Is that appropriate? Okay, great. A couple of things that I have to share with you all today. So I have the end of project report, which touches on just what we were able to accomplish, what has been happening since this project started. And then towards the end, I also have the IDI results. So we did an assessment, the Intercultural Development Inventory, and I have the organizational results to reflect where we are as a team, which I think you all will be happy to hear is a little bit more advanced than when we checked in at the halfway point. So let's go ahead and get started. What did we accomplish? Just to recap, we were looking at behavioral analysis and cognitive transformation regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion for staff. And so we trained roughly 162 staff. They were spread out across seven different training groups. Just so you all know, 162 staff have completed at least one session, but not everyone has completed the full suite of programming. Total, we did about 135 hours of direct content delivery. And when offering the IDI, the Intercultural Development Inventory, we had 62% of people complete it. Now, we'll say we offered two debriefs for the IDI as well, in which more people attended that session than we anticipated, which is great. But also more people have come back and requested that they be able to take the IDI as well. So there's more interest. So I'm imagining that that 62% will jump a bit. What are the sessions that we took people through? So we did a workshop on exploring bias. That was the very first workshop they went through. And most people had a positive experience with this session. This was really a time for people to do some self interrogation and to just reflect on where their biases developed when they first realized their set of social identities. So it was a pretty digestible session. Session two, we talked about culturally sensitive communication. And as you all may know, this was the toughest session out of the suite of programming because it does go beyond just being able to use buzzwords or being able to share Webster's definitions. It really went into exploring biases, exposing some biases, and having critical conversations about how we think about people, how we see the world, how we see ourselves. So that was like the, I would say, the gut punch session. We then recovered well with session three, talking about imposter syndrome. So we talked about how bias and how we see ourselves and our social identities impact how we showed up in the workplace. So whereas we see someone who's detached, they're not a team player, they're not engaged in the workplace. We talked about how that could be the orientation of a soulless, someone who has adopted this mindset, this defense to be able to protect the integrity of their work, but also their confidence with being in the workplace. Then we jumped into, okay, we're talking about all these things. You're telling us not just to be nice, but to be inclusive, to search for ways that we can make our policies more equitable. So how in the world do we do this? So we jumped into practical steps around anti-racism that people can do, not necessarily at a leadership level, what they can do from the seats that they hold. And then we concluded with, if you're observing these things, if you're witnessing microaggressions, if you're seeing hate crimes, or if you're seeing things happen in the workplace that we know are creating hostile and negative environments, how do you get over the discomfort? And how do you actually effectively engage and de-escalate those situations in a way that reduces harm, but allows you to still have connections and respect from colleagues? So those are the five sessions. How do we approach it? Every session, we start with setting community agreements. And I always let people know, if you do not feel that you can uphold these community agreements, you can step back from today's session. I didn't have anyone tell me that they weren't going to uphold the agreements. I didn't have anyone step back from the sessions. So people were committed to being here, even though they were like, wow, two and a half hours on a Zoom call on a Monday is rough, right? We got a lot of work to do. It's the pandemic. Your staff were absolutely committed to the time that it took and also the mindset that it took to complete the training. So I was impressed with that. What we really wanted to help people focus on was not that anyone was necessarily right or wrong, good or bad. We wanted people to learn and then commit to unlearning and relearning. So a lot of what we got to see in the online discussions, in the virtual sessions, was really people being like, I had no idea that these were the challenges that people were facing on a systemic level. They also had no idea that some of the things that they did in their interpersonal connections were furthering complications in the workplace. So when they were online, we had about 57 active participants. That means people that committed to every assignment. They commented multiple times, they were engaged, and they applied what they were hearing in the virtual trainings to the actual online platform. There are 17 unique discussion questions and the most common comment that we got was, wow, I did not realize this, or I had no idea. On average, your staff were spending about 40 minutes per resource and they totaled up to about 932 quality comments. So there is some other stuff in there, but as far as like actually being engaged and thoughtful, 932 comments. What were some common things that we saw? That initial resistance, which we expected that. We were not upset or disappointed by that. We know that some of these conversations are tough. So we saw people go from resistance into acceptance after hearing about other people's lived experiences. So one thing that your all the team did really well was opening up, going beyond just being transparent, but really being vulnerable about some of the experiences that they were having. We got to see a great shift from being colorblind, those phrases of, I don't see color, to affirming, I can see how this could be different for people who are a part of different racial groups. So that was, we're glad about that. People are asking questions, not just of us, but of their colleagues. And we know that there have been some conversations that have happened offline. I will say that I did meet up with some people 101 to dive deeper into their experiences, whether that was in person or virtual. And we did have some people come to us and say, hey, we're having conflicts or challenges with our coworkers. Can you help us work through that? So we mediated some situations for people in a way that's like, listen, we don't need to tell HR. This is not punitive, right? Like this is just an opportunity to learn. And it was great. I haven't heard any bad follow-up or feedback. So I think we're good. Continuing with online discussions, I want to say that there, this general theme of moving from hostility to acceptance was phenomenal. But there is one particular person who stands out to me, and I'm not going to name this person. But when they started this process, they, I mean, they were very honest, like, I don't have time for this. I would rather be doing other things. I'm not interested in talking about these conversations in this workplace. Like, we're fine. They, I mean, they were very vocal. Okay. By the time we, so some of the things that, those are some of the things. But then we also saw some things in the online engagement where they would say things like, so I'm automatically racist just because I'm white? This is so insulting. How dare you talk about white supremacy, right? It was just like this, this shutdown mindset. By the time they had worked through all of their sessions and engaged more with their colleagues in the workplace, I actually got great emails about this particular person from their peers that were like, thank you. We've seen this. I've been able to have this conversation. I've never been able to talk to this person about this before. And one of the most impressive things that they said towards the end, I think is also powerful too, is they acknowledge, I've never even heard of Jim Crow laws before. I wish I had learned about this in school. What books can I read? Now, this is a middle-aged person. This is not an eight-year-old who's never heard of Jim Crow. Okay, this is a middle-aged person who's been with your organization from some time. And just to see them have that realization, like, okay, there's a lot of things that weren't taught to me in school. So I have no idea how I got to this place of having these biases or feeling this way, but I'm committed to learning. I was incredibly proud and I did send them a note saying like, thank you for that vulnerability and transparency. So that's generally, what we did after each session is we asked them to give us some feedback. I did not include all of the questions here, but I did include the most powerful pieces of information. So up top, you'll see how they rate the course, one through four. Okay, that's just FYI. But what I learned, what you're going to see consistently throughout the sessions is how many people, and I'll zoom this in so you can see it a little bit, how many people said that they are learning something? So in our very first session, nearly 93% of people said that they learned something. And that's really important because when we asked them about their comfort with acknowledging bias, we didn't talk about combating bias or addressing it yet, just simply acknowledging their biases. About 90, about 86% of people said that they felt at least their comfort with acknowledging had increased some, whether that was a little or a lot, didn't matter. It had increased. And that's what we wanted when starting this session. We wanted to build that awareness so they had the ability to transform behaviors and how they thought. Some qualitative responses about that first session. When we asked them, what were the most valuable and thought-provoking components? People were saying things like the definitions. I didn't even know what the definitions of certain words meant and how they changed over the years, which I remember after this session, one of the groups was like, you know, it just kind of feels like, excuse my French, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. Like, how are we supposed to learn all of this stuff? So we knew that that was going to be the feeling, but we were glad that people committed to doing the learning. And I know that I've shared this report with you all, so I won't read through every single comment for each of these responses, but just wanted to pull that out. When it came down to session two, which we did say was the harder session, right? We got to see that 84% of people did say that they learned something. Now, the thing about this is kind of towards around session two, three, four, and five, not as many people were completing the surveys, which we know that that happens. Okay, we know that surveys are never 100% participation, so we understand that. But when we asked about their understanding of culturally sensitive communication, again, 73% of, or about 83% of people were saying it has increased some. Whether it was a little or a lot, didn't matter. The fact that it was increasing their understanding of more culturally sensitive communication, that was a win. Few qualitative responses that came out of session two is not to assume that someone understands or that it's, that they're good at certain things just because they're from a specific ethnicity. Not to assume that people have a shared understanding or that they're just good at certain things because they're from a specific ethnicity. That seems so basic in elementary, but that's where a lot of stereotypes can get disrupted, right? If we just take time to understand, groups are not always monolithic. So I was very proud of some of these reflections. Some people did say, you know, I'm not really noticing much cultural diversity in Monroe County government. So I'm not sure I will get the chance to practice or implement what we learned. So after that, we came back and talked a little bit more about what culture is. It's not just race and ethnicity. So we took them through exploring the different diversity dimensions. And I think overall, people came around to a better understanding. Session three about imposter syndrome. 92% of people learned something in the workshop. And when we're looking at the level of comfort, about 95% of people are like, my comfort or my understanding of imposter syndrome has increased some. When we asked them for feedback, a lot of the comments that we got were, we knew we had been feeling this way. We just had no idea what to call it. And now that I have a name for it and tips on addressing it, I feel better about it. We also took this conversation, not just from the perspective of how do you see yourself, or how do you feel about yourself, but better understanding your colleagues. So rather than seeing them as egotistical for constantly contributing to conversations, maybe they have trained themselves or have a defense mechanism as presenting as an expert, because that's where they find their value. Being able to contribute to as many conversations as possible and being trusted to be an expert. So this was good at helping people. The other, the other lens that we took with this was that microaggressions and what people have experienced along the span of their life, across the span of their life, has impacted why they have these defense mechanisms. So you see them as being an expert or needing to feel like an expert, but why do they feel that way? Where did that messaging start? Where did they start finding value in that? So it was good to see people say like, oh, some of these labels that I've assigned to people, you're not a team player, or you just want to be the leader, you think you're smarter than everyone, or some of that is literally people protecting themselves because they can't be their authentic selves in the workplace. Maybe not necessarily your workplace created that message for them, but remembering that by the time we are working together, we've been alive for decades and likely have worked in other places or been in other educational settings where these messages have been communicated. We started talking about anti-racist practices. Again, people, kind of the numbers fell off with the surveys, but for the people who did complete it, they learned something and their understanding of race and racism increased. And that was important. Understanding, the one thing that we wanted to disrupt for people, well, there are two main things around race and racism. One, we wanted people to understand that race is a social construct and that no one was born racist. And because they're not born racist, when we see people who do racist things, we have to remember there is a whole line of conditioning that got them to that moment. So we can't just see people as their ism or their phobia. We have to remember there was a process that got them there. And so we want to work on disrupting the process. They themselves will come out of those isms or phobias. And we were able to see that change, that change in thinking with the group. So we were happy with that. One thing that we talked about, or one of the most powerful responses we got from this is that understanding silence is violence. So if you're not speaking up about it, if you're not actively intervening in those situations where you realize microaggressions are happening or insults or invalidations are happening, maybe you're not speaking up about the gender inequalities that are happening, then you being silent about it allows it to continue to happen in the workplace. And it puts the pressure back on the marginalized or oppressed person to advocate for themselves. But when we talk about imposter syndrome, we know that people don't always advocate for themselves, right? So helping people to understand it's okay to speak up, but how to do it strategically and not to burn bridges, but to keep the door open for grace. So then we went into session five where we talked more intentionally about how to intervene, how to de-escalate. Some of the feedback that we got were, I am thankful for this training because before I started it, I thought I was very open-minded and accepting and didn't need much work. But throughout the training, I realized I say, think, and do certain things that I need to be more considerate about. I have some very healthy conversations with my childhood best friend who is black. We've laughed and cried together and this entire process has been eye-opening. That is powerful because even the people that came into this session, like, listen, I advocate for these things on a normal basis. I'm passionate about this work. I had DEI conversations. Even for them to experience growth and transformation, how they think or what they think or how they communicate with people and what they do was good. Someone said, I think the most important thing from today for me would be the idea of institutional racism. It's very easy for me not to see racism on a personal level. However, once systematic racism is brought up, you just can't deny it because you think about it and process it and it becomes a very real thing. That's what we wanted people to get away from is only seeing racism at the individual level, right? Some of the ideas and thoughts and processes and practices and policies that we go by and that we live by are because of the institutional, the systemic things. It has nothing to do with the people. But then we talked about how people uphold systems. So if the system is working, it's because the people are working it. And so we talked about why we have to intervene and de-escalate. So we had all these wonderful sessions and people are taking their intercultural development inventory because they were like, I want to know what's my orientation with dealing with and accepting and adapting to different cultures. So here on the screen, you see two scores. You see the perceived orientation. That's how the organization, that's how people felt about themselves. Most people are like, we're in the acceptance phase, which is normal. People usually don't see themselves as not accepting, right? The developmental orientation, though, is the actual score. It's our actual orientation. It's how we actually handle and address not just culture as far as differences and similarities, but also conflict, okay? If the score, just so you all know, if the scores differ by more than seven points, then it is significant difference. And so we do have a significant difference here. What we see is that our organization is falling within minimization. Now, again, this is about 62% completion rate, which is pretty good. That's a pretty good rate for completion for the IDI. Here you'll see a range. We did have some people that were scoring in adaptation and acceptance, meaning they are bridging, they're bridging the divide across cultural groups. They handle cross-cultural conflict pretty well. But most of us, most of our organization was scoring within minimization. So what does that mean? So what does that mean? Minimization tends to try to minimize difference and highlight similarities and commonalities. So they tend to want to bring, to bring people together based on what we have in common, rather than bringing people together and saying, I am okay with. It can support and uplift all of the differences. Sometimes people see differences as limitations to connecting rather than seeing differences as um, a strength to connection or enhancing the workplace. So having a minimization mindset can be challenging because usually people within the organization are like, we just go along to get along. We don't want to push the envelope, we don't want to ruffle any feathers. We don't want to come in and fully express our authentic selves, but we'll do that once we leave the workplace. Strengths, likely Monroe County government has found success interacting with people from diver- diverse cultures when commonalities can be drawn upon. Feels good when you have things in comedy, uh, in comedy, in common. Uh, but the developmental opportunity is, there may be some struggles to bridge um, across diverse communities when differences need to be more deeply understood and acted upon. And that's usually what we see in conflict. When you really need to have a deeper understanding of people and their actions usually arises within conflict, and when you're in a minimization mindset, that can be challenging. So this is the report. I know you all have it, so I will, at this time, take any questions that you all have about either the report or the experience. And I'll invite also if, if Elizabeth will like to share anything that they have heard in the workplace that maybe my ears haven't captured, but thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much for that great report, uh, really extensive. Let's see if we have uh, comments or questions from uh, my colleagues. Either of you have anything?
I just want to thank you for taking this on, and um, it's been a pretty big job, and I think was handled very graciously, and, and we really appreciate your work with the county staff.
Thank you. And to that point, Lee, I do want to say thank you all for your commitment to seeing this project through with the staff, when they could trust in your leadership and belief in the program. And I know that many of you were in the sessions going through it with people, so that was great. So I want to thank you all for that. And Elizabeth, thanks for helping with the schedule, because Lee, you're right. It was a lot of work, and the scheduling was a big piece of it, so thank you.
Uh, that was, that was a huge piece of it, the logistics. I would say that a couple of things that struck me, um, and I do want to thank the, the staff members who did participate because um, they were really honest and forthright um, about what they were feeling. And that's tough to do in a work environment, on a Zoom environment, and, and especially about topics relating to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It can be very difficult, and they were brave and thoughtful and compassionate. And um, I will say that I really, there were some things I really appreciated about this program, and especially in the structuring, um, but also in the facilitation. Um, it was a very welcoming um, process uh, where I think that helped folks be honest, not only with themselves, but with one another, uh, because there was a lot, as you say, of grace um, in, included. And I think that made a huge difference. I, I imagine that a lot of employees came into it thinking, we're just going to be talked at and told we're wrong and we're bad and we need to fix this. But it really was a good opportunity to think about um, each person, to think about their own background, how they got to be where they are, how things are socially constructed, their own experiences, but also the impact um, on others in our community at large, uh, in county government everywhere. Um, and how that, that impact is so significant. It's not just something to be dismissed, um, and that's really a key point here. Uh, so I, I really um, admire the way that you went about uh, putting this program together, and especially, again, the, the facilitation was very welcoming, and um, it worked, I think, I think really well. Um, so we appreciate that. And yes, um, Ms. Sessins, I thank you for organizing all of that. It is like
Yeah. I, I wanted to make a comment about that, and I just wanted to thank all of the employees that worked so hard and were very diligent about if they couldn't make a session. They were reaching out to me. I, I've said multiple times, I know too much personal information about people and where they are on a Monday afternoon. Um, and, and that's fine. Uh, you know, I was happy to, to help them reschedule, and they were very, very diligent about if, if they couldn't make it, they were emailing me or calling me and letting me know. And so I think a, a lot of that work was on them to make sure that they were uh, where they were supposed to be or doing what they were supposed to do. And, and I just want to praise them for that, that part, part of it.
Yeah, that's very, very good point. Thank you so much. Excellent. Well, we really appreciate this, and it's, and it's really helpful to have such a comprehensive report.
I did have one more comment that I just wanted to share. Um, I wasn't sure if, if there were any other questions from the commissioners, but uh, I think that language is important in the way that we talk to ourselves and the way that we, we talk to other people. And that is one thing that I think Nichelle has really given them the tools to learn language and um, to, to use. And I have heard it being used in conversations with employees. Um, you know, they've, they've used terms like microaggressions, or I've heard a lot of, of people say, you know, in the training, we talked about this, and then they go on and they, they are um, you know, relating that to something in the workplace. So I have heard that, and I've, I've tried to stay mostly out of this and not influence people in any way. Um, you know, not participating in, in, or observing the, the trainings or anything, but those are the things I've, I've heard in the wild, if you want to, to put it that way. Um, and so I, I think that they have learned a lot of, of that kind of stuff and ways to communicate with each other.
Yeah, that's evidence that it's sticking. You know, it's not just a, a program you get through and it's forgotten. It's actually implanted some great ideas and understanding and practice into, into everyday lives. So that's so important, so it's great. Did, did you have anything else to add, my colleagues? That's great, okay. All right, excellent. Thank you so very much. Appreciate your time, appreciate all the hard work. Thank you. All right, excellent. Um, and next we have um, a couple of items uh, from planning. Uh, so we'll bring on Ms. Nestor Jalen. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
It's good morning. Tell us about them.
Sure. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. So uh, can everyone see my screen, okay? Okay, good. Um, so the first item that I have
It's kind of small.
Oh, sure.
Yes. I can see the screen, I just can't read it.
Um, so the, the first item that we have here is ordinance twenty-two dash two, which is an amendment to the Monroe County zoning ordinance, chapter eight fourteen. Um, so just a quick summary of what this text amendment does, and then I'll go through it with you. Since this is a text amendment, this is something that has gone through the plan commission um, here for a work session, and then we'll schedule it at the end for a, a formal session and a vote. But just to introduce the topic, um, eight fourteen is the permits and certificates chapter. And so we're amending it to allow for additional criteria for the improvement location permit requirement. Um, and that is to allow for the, a change in use of any building structure a lot would require an improvement location permit. Um, we're also adding some clarification under the land use certificate, which is primarily for uh, commercial development when they're completed with their development. The land use certificate is our way of creating a punch list or, or sort of a compliance checklist to say, you've met exactly what you said you were going to do. So we're amending this to require an application uh, by way of online permitting instead of requiring paper copies. And we're also adding requirements for commercial sites to have additional as-bills if it's required by the administrator to prove that they were able to meet what they said they were going to do, and also to have those survey stakes around sensitive land features so we can tell that any protective measures were taken appropriately when we actually do a site visit. And then lastly, um, an amendment to allow for what's called a conditional land use certificate. Uh, the purpose of this is to accommodate landscaping seasonality uh, in southern Indiana. So I will walk through these, and if we have any questions, um, please let me know. Uh, so under the requirements for an improvement location permit, the change in use, this allows us to require a permit for items that are changing in use uh, for any portion of the lot. And we have that definition in our current chapter eight oh one. And then just clarifying, it's changed in use. Um, so we're consistent throughout the ordinance. And then, um, like I had mentioned in the summary, the application for land use certificate, just making sure that it's clear, it's online now. Um, and then also that under, if it's a commercial site, we can ask for some additional items, which have been an issue as of to date. We've gotten some pushback when we've asked for some of those as-built drawings because they are kind of costly, but if we are unable to determine some features that are on the ground, we really do need those as-bills to certify that it was done correctly and to grade and things like that, that we are not able to um, tell that just from a site visit. And then, um, we also want to be able to give ourselves ten days after application to be able to review that because on the online permitting software for land use certificate, it's been really great. We have a lot of interdepartmental coordination, stormwater, highway uh, planning, and if uh, building also, we just all look at it at the same time. So ten days gives us the time we need to, to get out there and, and review it separately and make those comments. And then finally is the conditional land use certificate, which allows us to give a conditional land use certificate for the first time for six months. And then if need be, uh, they can come back and request one last renewal for an additional six months at the administrator's discretion, and that's to allow for, accommodate for, um, you know, if we have cicadas coming or if we have a long winter, um, that allows them to really be able to move in without all full landscaping in, because that landscaping has to be kept in perpetuity. So we don't want them to plant it twice, but we also want it to be thriving when it goes in. So uh, that's the summary for the eight fourteen changes, and I can take any questions that you have.
Great, let's see if uh, my colleagues have questions or comments.
Yes, um, the land you, i- i- is that going to apply agricultural land?
So uh, the first, the way that it was proposed and then amended during the plan commission meeting is that numbers one and two would be applicable to residential or agricultural structures. Um, three and four are really just for items that were reviewed as commercial site plans. So if there is a, an agricultural, commercial business uh, that is identified, then it, it may be required, but most agricultural pole barns for storage, things like that, would, would fall under just one and two. Um, and largely land use certificates are applied for, for commercial sites that need to show proof that everything was to compliance.
Thank you.
Other, other questions or comments? Okay, can we, can we go ahead and put this on the agenda for next week? Is everyone okay with that? Great.
If possible, could we actually do the twenty-third by chance, the sixteenth? Okay.
Yeah, no problem. No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah. I guess I should say it this way, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay, great. Okay.
And the next item?
So uh, the next item is ordinance twenty-two dash three, which is another text amendment, and this is a text amendment to chapter eight oh two, which is zones and permitted uses. The purpose of this text amendment is to add a use that's currently not identified in the ordinance, which is scrap metal processing facility. Um, and that would be a permitted use only in the heavy industrial zone. As of last check on Thursday, we have fourteen lots in the entire county that are zoned heavy industrial out of uh, about sixty thousand. Uh, so this amendment would also include a definition that aligns with the Indiana state statute and places standards on that permitted use. And I've included a condition here that I will get down uh, when I get to the ordinance. I will actually read aloud, but the need for this text amendment is because of solid waste, uh, I D M, solid waste district, they do not consider scrap metal recycling as solid waste. So there's currently a gap in our ordinance uh, to address this necessary business use in the county, and therefore we've tried to allow for it in a way that meets our needs, but also would require oversight through site planning and things like that if, if provided or if requested by someone. So here's a way that the uh, ordinance would be amended. So it would be under the manufacturing, mining, construction, and industrial use category. And the definition that would be provided would be scrap metal processing facility and establishment having facilities for processing iron, steel, or non-ferris metal, and whose principal product is scrap iron, steel, or scrap for sale, re-melting purposes only. And then we've also made a cross-reference to the Indiana state code to exclude uh, some uses that were of concern. So automotive salvage recycling, automotive scrapyard, Hulk crusher, mobile home salvaging facility, vehicle disposal facility. And mainly all of this to mean, we're trying to uh, exclude uses or storage of some items that may have, uh, let's say oils or other contaminants that may uh, be on the site. So we're trying to avoid that. And then also just with the mobile home and, and having a large number of vehicles that actually can fall under our current definition for a junkyard, and that's not permitted. So we wanted to make sure that it was clear what the purposes of this type of facility is. And so this is the way it's being proposed to date. And then it would also come with a condition number fifty-eight, which is the uh, facility is accessed and served by road infrastructure sufficient to safely transport scrap metal by truck bed, trailer, or semi-trailer, and that is sufficiently buffered by natural objects, planting, fencing, or other appropriate means, so it's substantially screened from the main travel way of the system. And then the outdoor storage area would be limited to a hundred thousand square feet or less and be located in an area that complies with buildable area, as in the provision of eight oh four, which means not in a carst area, not in easement, not on a flood plain. So we're really trying to be uh, strategic about where that outdoor storage area can be because it will be hosting some outdoor storage of metals. Um, so I think that is all I have for this text amendment, and I can take any questions that you have.
My colleagues have any questions on this? Uh, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. How many sort of scrap metal facilities do we have within the county and that this might impact?
So I would say that we have uh, one property owner that is currently interested in this type of use, and we were told that it couldn't fall under our current uh, uses of, of, under solid waste because it doesn't actually hit the waste stream, it's processing metal for resale. So um, I don't believe we have another facility in our jurisdiction that is quite like this. We, you know, we have some automotive salvage that you could say maybe has some scrap metal processing from that, but that's, really, this is supposed to be like re-melting things as it, purchasing things as they come in, uh, repurposing, re-melting, and selling that metal in full, like not just like taking pieces of things and leaving behind other pieces of things, as, if that makes sense, not salvaging. Thank you.
Um, colleagues, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, um, is there any um, uh, interest in delaying this from my colleagues? Or are you ready to hear this whenever the planning staff is ready to present it on our regular agenda? Okay. Okay. Great.
Okay, so if I could bring these both back at, at the two twenty-three work session or regular session, okay.
That's, sounds great. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All right, let's see if um, any other departments have All right, let's see if, um, any other departments have an update or any items they wish to bring. Legal, commissioners, administrator, anything? Okay, all right. Doesn't look like any. Um, uh, my colleagues have anything else? Are they good with the order?
No.
All right, excellent. Um, so with that, uh, we are going to, uh, be adjourned. And please, everyone, get vaccinated and mask up. Thanks, everyone. Be well.